To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5X, resolution authorizing change order number three for the construction agreement with J.W. Puckett and Company.
Now to have a motion to accept the agenda is amended. Motion by Mr. Guine, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous votes. Brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Hunt, is Ms. Hunt here? Susan?
She's off the phone.
Okay. Yeah, get her, please. She's first on the agenda. Welcome everyone to this, to our meeting. I want to especially welcome my grandson. Thank you. Andrew, number four. Ms. Hunt?
Hey, before we start, I just would like, Mike Wills, you have a job to do. You know, I have a treat for all my city council folks, and I'll be here next Tuesday and the following Tuesday, so get ready. You'll get bread for three weeks. Okay? Mike Wills? The mayor gets one, too. Yes. Hey, before we start today, I am seventy-seven, and I get very emotional. What a tribute this is for these young people, for these children, and you parents, and the school system, and our community. I think it's absolutely awesome. Thank goodness I didn't have to take an ACT test when I was in college. Go to college, I'm sure I wouldn't have passed. I think it's awesome. Dr. Larry Gaudy, would you please stand? You're our interim superintendent. We are so glad to have Dr. Gaudy here with us. And before I get all my children in here, I'd like Swayze Cai, will you please stand? She's also a member of our school board. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Gaudy, would you like to explain what the recognition here we're about ready to do?
Thank you, Mayor. We're here today to recognize students that have scored thirty or above on the ACT. Thirty-six is a possible perfect score, and these students who have scored thirty or above on the ACT is phenomenal. And we have at least fifty-one at the high school that have already made that recognition, and more to come very, very shortly. So we're extremely pleased with it. Mr. Boudreaux, who is principal of the high school, can even give you further details about it, but we have what we call an ACT thirty club. And we're going to build banners with the pictures of all the students, just like you see at a football game, with athletes and cheerleaders and the like. We think that it's important at Biloxi High School to emphasize strong, strong academics, and that's what we're doing. And we're going to have these large, large posters hanging from all of the light poles throughout the entire parking lots of all of our students, also to give incentive for them to come. Mr. Boudreaux, anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Dr. Gaudy. I just want to thank the council for having us today. We really appreciate recognizing the students. Like Dr. Gaudy said, we have fifty-one students. We have a population of about seventeen-hundred-and-forty students at Biloxi High School. Fifty-one of them have a thirty or above on the ACT, so we're very proud of them, because it's not an easy task, as you all know. All of them are not here today, and let me explain to you why many of them are not here. Students that are scoring thirties and above on the ACT are very good students. Most of them are taking college-level courses at Biloxi High, and a lot of them, when I called them today and said, "Hey, are you coming at one-thirty?", they said, "No, I can't miss AP Cal", or "I can't miss dual-credit college algebra". So a lot of these kids are still sitting at Biloxi High School, because they chose not to miss class time today. So I just want you to understand why some of them are not here. I will recognize those, they don't have a certificate for Mayor Gillis to hand out, but I will recognize those that we were supposed to recognize today as well. The first is Mason Adams, who is not here with us, as well as Addison All. With us today, Joshua Batier. Not with us today is Landon Bodder. With us is Jacob Benny. With us today is Abby Butera. Got one young lady stepping in right now. Let me get hers for you, Mayor Gillis, because she came in a little late. Not with us is Sarah Cooksey. Also not with us is Charles Crocker, Ashton Davis, and Thomas Dip. But with us today, William Dixon, who is also a national merit semifinalist. With us today, Ryan Donald. Also, we have Hannah Dunn. Lily and Dawn. And to round out today's group was Zachary Elutares, who is not with us as well. But we appreciate y'all taking the time to recognize these Biloxi High kids.
How are you?
Me now?
Good job.
All right.
Hold it in there. Yes, sir.
Yeah, a very important part of our operation is our employees, and we're going to recognize a number of employees for some jobs that have been well-done for a number of years.
Hello, everybody. These are the Third Quarter Longevity Awards. First, we have Mr. Christopher Kekler, for five years in the police department. Next, we have Mr. John Major, for five years in the police department. Next, we have William Payne, five years in the police department. Next, Steve Roca, for ten years in the police department. Next, Richard Fortenberry, fifteen years at the port. Next, Bill Raymond, fifteen years in community development. Michael Wills, twenty-five years in the police department. Brian Thacker, thirty years in Parks and Recreation. And his beautiful wife Stacy Thacker, for thirty years in the administrative department. And then last, Ms. Denise King, forty years of community development. And then also, I see someone else, Justin Branding, five years in the police department.
As but not least, we have a proclamation to read, and we have some representatives from St. Patrick High School. Please come forward while we read this very important proclamation. Whereas, the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private schools based on their overall academic excellence, or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Whereas this year, fifty private schools were recognized for their overall academic excellence. St. Patrick Catholic High School is among the honorees. Whereas, St. Patrick Catholic High School is experiencing unprecedented growth, marked academic and extracurricular achievement, and a purposeful dedication to forming international, intentional disciples. Whereas, the achievement is because of the tireless work of the faculty and staff, and the commitment of the students, and the support of the families and other stakeholders, as they continue to have a strong vision for the future. Look for ways to improve and consistently work toward the pursuit of excellence. Now therefore, Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, Mississippi, in honor of this achievement, do hereby proclaim the fifteenth day of October, two thousand and nineteen, a St. Patrick Catholic High School National Blue Ribbon School Day. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, city council. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I'm Dr. Matt Buckley, principal of St. Patrick, and it's always exciting to get to talk about the school and get to celebrate the achievements of our faculty and staff. I want to introduce Mr. Patrick Millers with me today. He's our director of advancement. And right when we got here today, Ms. Hunt asked him, "What does that mean? What do you do? What does advancement mean?". So I wanted to let Ms. Hunt know that that means that he'll take all your money. That's his job, is to raise money for the school. As Mayor said, St. Patrick's experiencing unprecedented growth. We're excited about the future of the school. We continue to focus hard on academics and extracurricular activities, as well as our athletic programs, but the heart of who we are and what we do is forming intentional disciples and making sure that our students go out into the world when they graduate high school and graduate college, go out into the world and make a positive difference in their communities and in their nation. The goal of St. Patrick is to graduate students who aspire in excellence, and who are motivated to scholarship, discipleship, and championship. We try to graduate students who are independent thinkers, who are informed and enriched by a challenging curriculum, who strive to be intentional disciples each day, who are appreciators of the visual arts and performing arts, and the spirit of competition, who are lifelong learners, who are able to adapt to new information and technologies, and who are individuals who strive to develop the spiritual, intellectual, civic, emotional, and physical dimensions of their lives. At St. Patrick, we recognize that education is the biggest driver of economic development, so the work that we do each day and that our faculty and staff strives to do each day is very important for our local communities. While St. Patrick is just twelve years old, we're most definitely in our foundational years, our formational years, but we have a long legacy. We're proud to continue the heritage and legacy of Catholic education and excellence along the Mississippi Gulf Coast since eighteen-seventy-five. St. Patrick's here today because of the rich history of Catholic education, which was founded in the traditional roots of our legacy schools of St. John High School, Mercy Cross High School, Sacred Heart Academy, and Notre Dame High School, of which our mayor is a graduate. We always remember and give credit to the people who made up our legacy schools and laid the foundation for where we are today. I can tell you at St. Patrick, learning is what matters most. Our teachers focus on students' growth and learning in all areas. They teach to the child every single day. Want to take you through a couple of achievements this year. Earlier this fall, St. Patrick received recognition as being named the number-one best Catholic high school in the state of Mississippi by an organization that ranks schools across the nation. And just a few weeks ago, as Mayor mentioned, I got to announce that St. Patrick was named a National Blue Ribbon School by the United States Department of Education. This, of course, is an honor bestowed upon the top fifty private schools in the nation, which is less than one percent of all private schools in the country. On the academic side, we focus all of our time and energy on increasing students' ACT scores. Our average ACT score is twenty-six. We have a number of our students who do very well and earn college scholarships each year, and that's our big push, is to make sure that they get as much college scholarship dollars as they can, and also to make sure that they're most prepared for college. We have a hundred percent of our students graduate from high school each year, a hundred percent enroll in college each year, so it's our goal to make sure that they're most successful in that. Last year's graduating class, I'll talk about them very briefly, was a very special class to me. The class of two thousand and nineteen and I both started at St. Patrick together, just over six years ago. Last year's graduating seniors earned nearly ten million dollars in college scholarships, which was an average of about a hundred-and-sixty thousand per student. Like I said, a hundred percent graduation rate, a hundred percent college matriculation rate, so it's our vision that our students are most prepared whenever they leave St. Patrick. On the athletic and extracurricular side, we're very proud to have a fully comprehensive program within the Mississippi High School Athletic Association. We have participation at the junior high, junior varsity, and varsity levels in many sports. About ninety-five percent of our students participate in athletics and co-curricular activities. We offer twenty-five athletic teams and twenty-seven extracurricular activities, and to date, St. Patrick has claimed over thirty-seven statewide athletic titles in the past twelve years. While we're proud of our academic, athletic, and extracurricular successes and achievements, spirituality and faith formation is truly at the heart of what we do. Not only do we want to assist students in developing their own spiritual life, but we also want to help them foster a Christian social conscience by giving back to the community. Just last year, our students averaged, or together, our students completed more than fifteen thousand hours of community service within their local communities. So it's definitely a push of who we are and what we do. And I deeply recognize, as Mayor said in the proclamation, it's the tireless work of our faculty and staff, and the commitment of our students, and the support of our families and stakeholders that makes St. Patrick truly great. We do have a strong vision for the future. We look for ways to improve in all that we do, and we consistently work towards the pursuit of excellence. Once again, thank you very much for the proclamation today. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a few things about the school. I want you to know how much we appreciate you, Mayor, and to our city council. We appreciate all of you, all of your support and promotion of our school very much. We're also proud to have two of our partner elementary schools here in the city. Our Lady of Fatima Elementary and Nativity BVM Elementary. Both are excellent schools and do an amazing job each day. St. Patrick is rich in culture, and is truly a place like no other. So I invite you to come visit our campus sometime, introduce you to our faculty and staff, and let you witness this awesome culture rooted in scholarship, discipleship, and championship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Buckley. We're proud of the accomplishments that you had, and keep up the great work. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. And Madam President, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Do we have any departmental reports? If not, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, once again, a great cruisin', a lot of good action. I went and spent the day with Kenny Tuesday at Margaritaville. That place was packed. That turned out pretty great, Kenny. And Wednesday, I don't know if we've got any more cars down there Wednesday. I don't know if we opened up Howard Avenue or anything else, but there was everywhere you went. Just walked the whole area, it was awesome, you know? Then Thursday, went to Sheridan, at the foot of the street of Hopkins, they had a big car show there. So I mean, just in Biloxi, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you get enough to do, but it turned out great. So that's a good thing for us. Good thing for the city. You can't beat it. So we've got to keep doing it, getting better and better every year. It said they had eight thousand, six hundred and twenty cars. What do they say, they're not going to quit till they get nine thousand, but they're certainly creeping up there. That's a lot of cars. There's still a lot of cars that wasn't registered, you know? So I don't have to ask the police department how everything went, with the cones, without the cones, but it seems, they said the traffic was heavy when you go to the mall, no kidding. Man, you got ten thousand cars going, whatever you think it's going to be, it's going to be slow. But I mean, that's part of it. That's why they call it cruisin'. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of going to tea a little earlier today, and had the honor of introducing the mayor's wife. And so, Mayor, you're going to have to make up for me tonight. She did great. She did great. Absolutely, absolutely. Other than that, I wanted to, Walt, I see he's not here. I need some information from him. I want to know the percentage of roads that are completed on the east side of Biloxi. And also, and because he's not here, I spoke with George, just want to get a meeting with myself, Mr. Lawrence, yourself, Mayor, and Mike Leonard, so we can kind of start making some discussions.
Let me update you on some of the meetings we have had, and some of the, you know, actually what we can wrap up. We're three sections. The one on the point, the, three sections, we're seeing how far we are completing, so whether we can say it's substantially complete. There's a number of checklists that Walt is probably working on right now, that we have to give, you know, regarding the video of each one of the systems, and what they have to give us in order to say we're, you know, we're getting there. So we're going to deliver, have another meeting, and I would invite you to be with us Monday, and to go over that checklist, which will, hey, we're going to see how many we can wrap up and say it's finished with minor, you know, fences and driveway issues, but for the major systems, we want to see how close they are complete. But we'll have an update Monday, and then with them, because we've already had one meeting identifying what videos are done, accepted, and what systems are done and accepted. So that'll be Monday, and I'll keep you, I think, about two o'clock.
Okay, I'll make that mean, because I'm, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm out there with the people, and I'm not privy to that information, so I'm the one who gets the brunt of the stuff that comes at me. And so it'd be nice if I had some of that information, and it'd be nice if Walt could make that available.
We'll do that.
To someone like myself.
Yeah, we need to be able to tell them something.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
So the most important part, did you like jacked-up coffee bars, tea?
Absolutely.
All right, tell everybody. Mr. Dimming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, a couple of things I'd inquired maybe a couple of weeks ago about the Eisenhower Crossing, railroad crossing, and it just continues to deteriorate. I know, as I said earlier, CSX, you know, they move at their own pace. Have we received any word in the last couple of weeks about the Eisenhower Railroad Crossing?
Only that MDOT, the MDOT representative, as well as the CSX people have told us that they heard us, but they haven't done anything yet. So all we need to do, we just got to keep pushing.
Right. I mean, we can't do anything until they act.
Right. It is the area between the rails is where the problem is.
Tell me about it.
That's right. And that's something we can't touch.
It's really horrible. Thank you. The only other question I have is I know that in social media, there was an issue about Southern Memorial Park, and it's a private cemetery, and part of what I read was that the city has a right-of-way, and MDOT, I don't know what area we control there, if we control anything at all, it would be a right-of-way close to Highway ninety, right? Basically, my question is, is there anything that can be done so that, I know it's private property, but on the easements, MDOT of the city, can we do anything?
I think we could look at where our easement is, and where MDOT's easement is in relation to, we know where people were parking, and we can kind of, it could be coned off, or flagged off, or barricaded.
Right. We just need to make an effort and enforce whatever it is we do. I heard from a couple of folks, and I'll be in that cemetery one day, I'll be under a tree, because I burn easily, but I'll be there if anybody wants to visit. Thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to just comment on George kind of coming out to our cruisin' at Margaritaville. We actually tipped over a thousand cheeseburgers. I think George ate the thousand and one cheeseburger.
Pretty awesome.
But it was pretty amazing. We even had St. Michael's Church on their Facebook page, kind of posting a photo of the cruisers, and you could see St. Michael's Church, the Fisherman's Church, in the background. It was pretty awesome. Pretty awesome event. Another thing, the Episcopal Church of the Redeemer on Pops Ferry, I just want to mention to everyone, if you want to take any kids or friends out to the Biloxi's oldest pumpkin patch, it's now open till the end of October. It's a lot of fun. The kids have a lot of fun going out there and picking out pumpkins of whatever size and colors and all that kind of stuff. We always look forward to that. And then a couple of things on the agenda today, I just want to touch on before we get to them. One of them, I see that we're trying to create a coalition sound. Appreciate that, Mayor, that's a smart move. Recently, if you've read, not only the Bonnie Carey spillway, but now the Mid-Bretton spillway, or whatever they call it, there's a move to spend eight hundred million dollars to open that and spill more freshwater intrusion, or what do we call it?
River water.
River water, river water intrusion into the Sound and affect our way of life and everything as we know it. So I hope that we form a strong coalition and stand up with a loud voice, that we got to get the facts before they start doing all this stuff that screw things up. And then finally, and I'll touch on it more when we get there, but item F on the consent agenda, we're looking at some wetland mitigation for the Elsie Place. I think we've, they've done their study, it requires some mitigation, and what that simply means is that we're paying for some credits so that we can mitigate some losses of wetlands as we develop that area, and they can improve some wetlands elsewhere. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Nathan Barrett?
I have no report.
Okay. And I would like to remind everyone that we have Halloween in Hiller Park this Friday. We're still looking for volunteers and businesses to get involved. And also, we have pickleball tournament this Saturday. I was invited to actually play in the tournament until they heard how horrible I am at sports, and then they quickly turned that around. And also, I see Dennis Lambert, Mr. Dennis Lambert, in the audience. Do you have anything you would like to comment on about the spillway? You can come on up.
Well, I just introduced myself, and I've been working on the diversions off and on for twenty years. I believe that you had organized a meeting early on when the spillway first, we started seeing the effects of river water in the Mississippi Sound, and it was the same effects that we were evaluating over the last five or six years in Louisiana related to the diversions. It's a, the state of Louisiana does try to distinguish between the diversions and the spillway, even though it's the same river and the same estuary. So I think that everybody needs to understand how they communicate about their projects, and can see through what they are communicating. But I have been sending my credentials, as you know, Dixie, to you and to the mayor's office, through the city attorney and others in the state of Mississippi, and I hope to move my little family over here and help protect the Mississippi Sound. I don't really particularly like what is going on, and it really started last year for me when they stuck the Marine Mammal Protection Act waiver in the budget bill, the bipartisan Budget Act of two thousand and eighteen. That's what really showed the difference between, you know, doing something virtuous and well-intended to not, in my opinion. They did various other things. They did various other things, and I stayed on the job until May thirty-one of this year, and now I'm, I'm free to come over here and, and share all that I've learned over the last twenty years. I've worked on these jobs off and on for twenty years, so I'm hoping to share that with this community here in Biloxi and along the whole Gulf Coast. So, I'm gonna wait for Peter to invite me. I think there's gonna be a workshop after your business today at some point in the future, and I'm, I'm hoping to attend that with others, and I'll, I'll share at that point. So, thank you for letting me come up and introduce myself, and now the council knows who I am. I'm an engineer from New Orleans, so I've been trying to raise the awareness of what is going on in Louisiana for the last five months over here in Mississippi. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any. If not, I'll just, I'll keep coming back. Okay, yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ordinance to amend sections sixteen, two, five, and six of the Code of Ordinances.
I really have nothing to add. I think this is, recall, Mr. Ray, but this kinda puts us in line with what's going on throughout the state, and that's all. I just think it needs to be passed. It'll help streamline what we do now. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing to add.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, unanimous votes? Moving on to Resolution B.
Resolution to adopt a memorandum of understanding with the coast city and county governments to form a Mississippi Sound Coalition.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
Just reiterating what I said earlier, that, I mean, it looks like they're trying to railroad some of this stuff through and, and quite frankly, sneak some of this stuff through, and we, we know what, how it's affected us this past year. I mean, I mean, it was detrimental, and to go through that in any shape, form, we should be working for a long-term solution and, and not an eight-hundred-million-dollar project for whatever reason and intentions at our expense.
Let me also echo that, you know, Biloxi, DeAlberville, and Harrison County were gathering up options and, you know, actually experts that will say, hey, this is wrong, and there's a path, you know, original jurisdiction, so, I mean, we're not gonna sit back and do nothing, I can promise you. And so, we'll need, you know, a unanimous, all in, hey, we're all in and trying to stop this, this stuff, because we can't afford to have it done again to us without, you know, some extreme consideration. Thank you.
They have come?
How many, you got them all together?
We've only got three of them with money up, but we have, you know, this is the phase to get it rolling, and we're gonna say, this is your share, this is what you can afford if you wanna be in on this, but with all the, I think on the thirtieth, Peter, we're all gathering again at the thirtieth up on the third floor. So, I know from Jackson County and even Hancock County, so we'll, we'll be together on the thirtieth, and we invite you two to come, but yeah, no, this is, we're all in, you know, it's not just us in Louisiana, against Louisiana, but it's, you know, us against the rest, the rest of the country, with regard to that river water that has done so many bad things to us, even from Joe Hart to the present.
I think Ocean Springs has it on their agenda for this week, and Goché, to get into the memorandum of understanding, Ocean Springs should have it on their agenda this week. Goché, I think, has it coming, Pascagoula as well, so nothing but positive response from anybody. You know, they're glad somebody has taken the lead, so that's what, what we're doing here.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add to what Mr. Glavine stated, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Brings us to Resolution C.
Resolution approving the employment of professionals in connection with the city's intention to issue geo-bonds in the amount not to exceed nine million dollars.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
No, other than it's gonna save us money in the long run, and I'm all for that. Thank you.
That's right, our experts say it's time to relook at it because of the rates, and I think that's what we're doing, and, you know, we feel good about doing this.
Always a good thing to do, thank you.
We're, assuming we can meet the conditions of the criteria that was established in the resolution, the four criteria that are listed on, taking notes on the sheet that I put in front of you, assuming that we, the numbers match up, we expect to be back to council within two weeks to present the actual bond documents. So, this is gonna move very quickly, so we can nail down this low rate.
Mr. Lawrence?
Oh, it is, save a little money, right? You can't beat that, on time you save a little money.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Moving on to Resolution D.
Resolution confirming the appointment of April Ready as municipal court judge pro town.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one question, how many judges we actually have now? How you have, you just have them on retainers? How's this work? Because we seen every other month, we put another one on.
Well, this, this is basically, yes, a judge on retainer because of some medical issues that are ongoing, that, that, that we're, we need a backup judge to be paid by the hour. It's coming out of legal budget, but it's just something we need for flexibility, so in case, in case the other judges are not able to perform. And by statute, this is the way they say it should be done.
Well, ACIU caused all this problem, anyway, we getting money back from them? They created the problem, it caused us a ton of money.
Well, we could, we could always let a judge go, and that would save some money, but, but right now, I don't think we need to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is April here?
She is out of town this week, but I, she did come, she was here Wednesday for Cruising the Coast, and I've asked her to come back next week to, if she's appointed, I'd have asked her to come back, next week.
All in favor? Unanimous vote? Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
None for me.
Mr. Glavine?
I just wanna note, I'll be recusing myself from item J. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Dimming?
On item EE, echo, echo, the memorandum of understanding that we've entered into with, I think, the Department of Transportation and Ocean Springs regarding the maintenance of landscaping and lighting for the, for the bridge, if we rescind this memorandum, currently, who's responsible for maintaining these, these responsibilities?
Well, that, that was the purpose of this. MDOT came to us saying that it was now our job to take it over. It got on the agenda, but before anybody signed it, looking and doing a little more research, it appeared to me that since those lights were already in existence, and they were all, they built those lights, it's their job to keep maintaining those and keep the status quo. We have lights in our, through our city because we wanted illumination, and we paid for those lights. And just because, you know, they, they sorta did it under the pretense of this is an extension of your city illumination, but there are separate statutes that I don't think were really considered, and Ocean Springs has not signed this either after we contacted them, so it's just rescinding the original resolution and allowing us to come back and let's try to determine who's really responsible for this.
So, then the interim, MDOT will continue to maintain them?
Absolutely.
What about the landscaping areas?
Those, those typically aren't done much by them anyway. We already kinda do that landscaping, but that's something we wanna talk about as well.
And I think there were some agey opinions out there also that support our position on this, I think, is what I read in the resolution.
Yes, and we cited those, so MDOT can look at them themselves.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may, I'd like to propose a motion, reflect on item Y, five Y. I'm just picking, I'm just realizing I need to do this in the beginning. There is an exhibit on five Y, which is a Community Bank Cash Flow Lease. Are those copies up? Can those copies be passed along? We just need to, just need to eliminate on that exhibit the word qualified down under additional terms. The word qualified and the word section two sixty-five L B three B. And those, you'll see, I made those corrections on the copy that the clerk has, just a, has to do with qualified versus non-qualified bank loan.
Should we just make a motion to amend it and add this as an attachment?
I'd, I'd make a motion that we adopt or amend the exhibit as noted in item five Y.
Okay, second? Okay, second by Mr. Dimming? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Okay, anything else, Mr. Dimming?
Just my usual no votes on U, V, C, C, H, H, and I, I.
U, V, C, C?
H, H, I, I.
I, I.
It's all the just compensation.
Did you get that, Ms. Lucy? U, V, C, C, H, H, and I, I.
It's all the just compensation.
Are you voting against those or abstaining?
Against them.
Against. Glavine is sustaining against J. Do you have any items you'd like to discuss, Mr. Guines? What about you, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on acres that we selling, that you, the clay on surface, one point six acre, are you gonna lease all of it one time, sell it all at one time, or partial?
The ad we're gonna do in the RFP is going to, we're gonna entertain any sort of offers, all part, and then we'll just make that decision, bring any bids we have, bring that back to y'all for consideration. If somebody wanted all of it for a certain price, that may be one thing to consider. If we got a better price for one particular parcel, it may be more advantageous to do that. But we probably do wanna have some minimum bid we're gonna put on there to start out with, just so we, something at least equivalent of what it's on the tax assessment for.
Well, several months ago, this is where the grocery store and the gas station and everything was supposed to be put, so that deal's off the table.
That was actually north of Division, I believe, so.
Yeah, right on Division, right by Cobb Street there, and then you're gonna try to buy out a little lot that were going by size place. The city were gonna do that, that's where the grocery store and the gas station are. That's where, that was suggested earlier at some of these budget meetings, so there was no, there's no deal at all.
Well, there's no pending buyer right now, that's true. Some, some of the problem is, I'm not sure a lot of people know these properties are available or are for sale, and so, we plan to put some signs up and to get some, there's good traffic there and to get some, let's put the property out there for advertisement.
The biggest problem with this property, it's outside of Anglada, it's just not deep enough. That was the biggest problem there, was before, they tried to ask too much money to the city. That's the, it's not that, it's not that wide, it's long, put maybe two Sonics on it or something like that, but it's, it just don't have the depth to it. That's why they made the mistake of not going past Anglada, taking that property, you know, at that time, thought we had been a bigger piece of property, but that, you know, that's way before y'all's time. That's, that's Paul Mayor, remember that, 'cause he's old. Then, I was just wondering what happened to the other deal. And where do we know it's a pier, on the, on the R, excursion pier?
We're closing the project.
Say again?
We're closing the project. It was an existing capital project we're closing.
So, that's done?
As far as we're concerned, it's done for now, there wasn't any money left, really.
And we saved a few dollars. Any money left over?
I think this, this project predated Margaritaville expanding over into that area. This was an area we wanted to have a public excursion pier, we could never reach an agreement with our Secretary of State.
That's why we were trying to put the Pan American on it one time.
To run the Deer Island.
The bridge?
To run from there to Deer Island, it appears.
That's why you're gonna put, when you run that bridge over there, you gonna put the homeless village over there, too? On W, Peter, this is about, we adding a charter boat, I understand that, but did you ever pull the rules and regulation on what is the, how many charter boats is actually piled in there, that whether a percentage of that land was donated, and all those things were set up? Did you ever, I actually researched that to find out if you're gonna add another charter or not?
We did.
And I know y'all trying to clarify some of the people that are supposed to be charters, they're not charters now, so, but I...
We did, and we went to DMR, and DMR wrote us back and gave us a, a number they said was the max we could go to.
You know, DMR had nothing to do with the land was donated, this was a contract, like Jones, Polk, and Guppo, it was a contract was set up, and you can't void the contract and lose the whole thing. That's all I'm trying, somebody need to find out what to take, how many percentage it is, how many slips you have, and that's how many charter boats you're gonna have. It's all written in the law, so, I mean, I guess you need to check that out. That's all I was trying to do.
Who's chartering boats and who's not, and we may have people who not really charter in boats.
That's what I'm saying, so, all that needs to be straightened out, because this was a same old deal, you know, the money was controlled by somebody else. And on, on Y, what do we actually, what do they want?
Why?
Yeah.
Why do we need two fire trucks?
I said, what is the deal with, what is he looking for?
This is, this, it was, we discussed this in great length during the budget preps. This is the purchase of two fire trucks. It's being financed as a lease purchase over seven years at a very low interest rate. We got numerous quotes, and the best quote was from Community Bank, so, once approved by the council today, I assume, we're going to sign our lease agreement with the Community Bank. Community Bank's gonna wire the money to the truck vendor, they're gonna wire it to the factory, and a year from now, we're gonna have two fire trucks. We don't make any payments until we receive the trucks.
Okay, so, are we actually changing anything?
No, we're just asking permission for, to, we now know the details of the lease cost.
Okay.
What you approved in the budget was a, just a generic one million oh fourteen, I can't remember the exact number, it's a little over a million dollars that you approved in the budget to buy two fire trucks, to lease purchase two fire trucks. It's in the budget, now we've done the deal with the bank, that's what we're asking for signature on, we've got final numbers.
Thank you. And I see Z, once again, we playing around with Polk's Recreation, what are we doing with this money? We moving from where to what, or what are we doing with it?
What you're, what you're seeing, through that agenda, you see a series of closures. This is a classic, typical end of the fiscal year closeout of any of the projects where the work has been done and there's little or no money left, and it's, it's moved out of the, out of the project. it's moved out of the, out of the project. That's, I mean, this is part of what we do to reconcile at the end of any fiscal year is we close out, we don't leave projects on the books, we close them out and take the money normally and dump it into, to a bucket such as a municipal paving or such, there's usually very little money, if any, left in these projects when we close them. Do you wanna, you wanna tell them where you put the money? No? If you care.
It's in the capital project.
It's in, it's in, yeah, it stays in the capital project budget.
There are forty projects that we're closing out, all of them had less than $5,000 remaining in the budget, that money was moved to another similar project, the money could be used elsewhere, other than that, it's just in preparation for the amended budget that I'm working on.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That might be it.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote, huh? Except the ones we discussed, right? And the one that's amended, all right, code enforcement.
First case on the agenda today, item A, Sanjevatka, 2459 Pass Road, this property's still in violation, I had a conversation with Mr. Batka this morning, he asked for an additional 30 days and I told him I would recommend that to the council.
I'll recommend that.
Motion by Mr. Demming, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? Unanimous votes for 30-day extension.
Item B, Land Equity LLC, 636 Murray Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Gregory Thomas Moore, 339 Greenwood Drive, that case has been resolved. Item D, Travis Patterson and Felicia M. Kalui, 329 Greenwood Drive, that case has been resolved. Item E, Ellen B. Terrell, 171 St. Francis Street, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ellen B. Terrell at 171 St. Francis Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item F, Ovetta M. White, 1095 Frank P. Corso Street, this property's still in
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ovetta M. White at 1095 Frank P. Corso Street? If not, this case is closed. Do you have a motion on the routine agenda?
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guines, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Did we receive any money? I see Walt's not here, any money coming down the pipeline? Hey Walt?
Right on cue.
Did you hear that?
Did he say, nothing, I didn't hear it, I waited for one of them to say something, I thought they were doing a hand sign to each other.
2.66.
Okay.
You heard that?
I'd like to say something before we close this meeting, when we get to that part, we all come up here, we try our best to make these meetings and we sit here and like the directors not to be here, buzz, ask questions, that's not right, we come to have these meetings, this is where we speak at, these are the laws we set, these are the bills we pay, these directors should be at these meetings, and they shouldn't leave before the meeting, because half the time, the only good time to see them is at these meetings, so I like to put out that the mayor, to make sure the director's at these meetings. Thank you.
All in favor of the routine agenda? Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
All in favor? Unanimous vote? Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, do you have something?
I do, I'd like to ask the council if they would consider closing this meeting and.
Wait, we got an executive session.
Oh, we have?
Yes.
Okay, we'll come back.
Hold that thought.
I'm holding it.
Do I have a motion that the council go into closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into executive discussion?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six one? Six one? Okay, um, do I have a motion that the council reconvene as an open meeting?
Me and, me and Guines.
Lawrence, Guines, all in favor? Six one? And now do I have a motion that the, uh, resolution that the council go into executive session? Lawrence, Guines, six one. We're going to an executive session for the purpose of leasing and sale of property regarding Magnolia Hotel, potential sale and Old Library lease terms. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Unanimous vote? Let the record state that we did not take any action. Six one, sorry, six one. Do I have a motion to, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to ask the council if they would support closing the meeting in memory of Beverly Jane Kavasovich, known as the matriarch of the point.
I'll second that.
We all second.
We'll all second that.
All in favor?
Right.
Unanimous votes, including the mayor. Meeting recessed.